Item number one, COVID-19. Discussion and action on measures to mitigate the impacts of the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic. We will have a presentation on the COVID-19 federal relief, the American Rescue Plan Act. They'll be presented by our city manager, Dave Vaughn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First is a COVID update. As normal during these city council meetings, we're providing updates to everyone as a result of those changes that are occurring. I'm pleased to announce that we are moving to the red tier. Sutter was announced yesterday to go to the red tier. These are our numbers effective as of today. 9.1, which is under the 10,000 or under the 10 cases per 100,000, and 5.1, which is below in line with the positivity rate. The 9.1 is a result of the area of the reaching 2 million vaccinations. So that number went from seven to 10 under state guidance. So we've fallen underneath that realm, and so we will be in the red tier. And then a big state, and there's Sutter County right in the right up there. And so I wanted to share that with you and also show, you know, the COVID statewide metrics, which 6.5 new cases, 2.3% positivity over a seven-day average, 28.7% ICU availability. Importantly, I think noticing the county risk levels widespread, which is the purple tier, there's still 11. Substantial, which is the red tier, is now at 42. The orange tier, which is there's four, and then one at the minimal. So it's showing progress, and I wanted to make sure that the council and public got a chance to see where we are headed as of tomorrow. Red tier substantial really starts to change some things. Some indoor businesses can open with modifications. Many can open indoors at 50% capacity or 200, whichever is fewer. For example, restaurants, places of worship, and movie theaters. Some can open indoors at 25% capacity of gyms, bowling alleys, and card rooms, and personal care services can open indoors with modifications. I think it's important to note that these start to continue to change as the governor and his team makes changes, and we'll update folks as the red tier, you know, of these modifications change for us. Questions?
Questions from the council. Okay, time for some public comment. I see a gentleman had his hand up here. If you could go to the podium and state your name for us, please.
Thank you. Christopher Burrit, pretty new resident, been here about three years. But just a quick question about this tier system. Where are these statistics tiers, numbers coming from?
State of California.
State of California, so the California Department of Health or something like that?
They have their own CDC for the state, and so they drive the metrics that would drive our, the ability for us to do things.
Do we audit these numbers at any time ourselves?
We do not. We fall under the by-county health officer, and so that person takes care of auditing those and making sure that, you know, vaccinations are up to date and those type of things on the metrics. I would encourage you to go to the website, suttercountycoronavirus.com, and there's a lot of great useful information there, and it's updated very current, so at least a few times a week, and it just shows how things are going, not only in Sutter County, but Yuba County and us both counties together.
Okay. Yeah, that's about it. Just questioning the whole statistics, numbers, et cetera, because, I mean,
I understand.
It's reliable as the people we get them from, you know, so.
I understand. That's what we have, so.
I have a couple speaker cards. I'm gonna go in alphabetical order. First up is Courtney Allen.
Hi, how are you guys doing tonight? I'm good, thank you. So I had a couple questions. As you guys are starting to open up and, you know, you're bringing the community back together, I did want to know what your plan is as far as restrictions, you know, especially for things like parks and rec and, you know, any type of recommendations that you all will be making. Will you be following Dr. Lou's suit? Will you be asking, you know, let's say, for example, a summer camp, are these kids gonna be tested upon arrival, wearing masks, that kind of a thing? Do you guys have a plan for that?
I would think that perhaps our, Mr. Brad McIntyre might be better able to address the things that the city's going to be doing as we continue to bring our rec programs back into full function.
Good evening. To answer your question, we will be adhering to the CDC. As far as testing prior to coming into our programs, we have not done that since COVID has started. We have slowly implemented programs with the purple tier, and then we've kind of gone back and forth where we start programs, and then we'll have to go back and shut them down depending on the tier program that Mr. Vaughn just talked about. But specifically, as things open up, we increase our participation numbers, and we will follow the CDC guidelines as we did when, as we were slowly shutting down about a year ago.
Do you really think that's a good, honestly, do you really think that's a good, I would say, example to follow when there's been so much controversy and pushback, and there's been a lot of evidence that's come out that the CDC has not, all of the, between the PCR tests, between the vaccine, between the masks, like, these haven't been the best ways to go forward. It actually, there are a lot of doctors that are coming out talking about treatment that might be the best way forward, and might, and that masks are very ineffective, and that these actually stifle people's health. Do you consider looking at maybe some other sources than the CDC?
I'm certainly open to looking at other sources, but I'm just going based on traditionally what, as a city, whether it be parks and rec, our employees, their policy and procedures that we put in place, we usually follow the guidelines of the CDC.
Okay. Would you guys be willing to offer some different programs that are unique to the CDC? For example, allowing people to make choices as far as participating in COVID restrictions?
I will always take things into consideration. Let's do this. Let me give you my name, and I'll give you a card.
Okay.
I'd love to hear some options that you think that we could provide, because that is what we're here to do. We're here to provide programs and services to our.
Yeah, I'd love to talk to you a little bit more about that.
I'd love to.
I also, I just wanted to mention this. I know I'm spending more than my three minutes. I apologize to everybody. I gave you guys packets. These packets, they are studies about the vaccine, and I just wanted to make a comment that this vaccine, there are a lot of studies that show that it does have adverse health effects, and I was wondering if you would be open to possibly giving informed consent to the people receiving the vaccine. I'm not against liberty, and if somebody really wants this vaccine without knowing what's getting injected into them, by God's grace, they live in America, you know, but would you guys be willing to give informed consent that this is still an experimental shot, and that studies did show that it had adverse effects?
Courtney, I think that, may I call you Courtney?
Yeah.
Okay. When it starts to get into medical stuff, there are certain regulations way above the city council, the HIPAA is the acronym, and I mean, these are things, these are personal decisions between an individual and their medical provider, and I don't think you're gonna see the city get in the middle of any of that.
You guys are providing the facilities, right, where these are happening?
No.
The county is?
No, the county is.
Okay. So that's not under your jurisdiction? You're not doing anything that has to do with providing the vaccine to people?
No.
Okay, well, by all means, please still read the study. I think it's an important piece of information.
We will. Well, thank you for your letter, too. I do want you to know that we did pass that on to the council, too.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Actually, I have Jason Kahn next, Mr. Burns, if that's all right?
Yes, good evening, council. Thank you for having me. Just want a quick comment on all this, reiterate on, that was a good question. Where are we getting all this information? Are we relying on Dr. Lou's information? Is that where we're coming from? And why is Dr. Lou not here? This is open forum. We're asking all these questions about medical history, and you guys can't answer them. Why isn't she here?
Well, I'm not gonna speak on her behalf. I'm not qualified to do so. She's a doctor, I'm not. I will tell you that as a city, we fall two levels below those who are making rules and regulations regarding what goes on here with this continuing pandemic. I'm not gonna say that we all up here agree or disagree with that.
Yes.
But the state, the state trumps the county, and the county trumps the city when it comes to some of this stuff, to be quite honest with you. I'm not trying to shirk responsibility. I'm just speaking frankly, openly, and honestly with you.
State doesn't trump the county.
Well.
We can trump the state, and you know that. And we gotta.
I understand.
We got a sheriff that can stop that, and don't say that. That's what you guys are here for. You're here to fight for us. We're here to speak, and you guys are, we hired you guys, we voted for you guys. If you guys got out there and when you guys wanted to get voted, you were out there in the city streets getting us to vote for you, and you were out there every day and every night, and now you want to sit back and just sit back and do nothing? No, we want you guys to do what we voted for you to do, and now it's time to stand up.
I appreciate your concern.
You canvass the streets, you canvass the streets every day and night.
I appreciate your.
Now fight for us.
Okay, are you gonna let me speak, or?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate your concern. To suggest that any one of us isn't trying to do what's in the best interest of the city is a bit disingenuous.
Correct, but don't tell us that the state trumps the county. They could tell us what to do, but just like anything, we can.
You know, the only thing, I'm not gonna get into a debate with you, but I think you saw this county try to open up certain bars, restaurants, et cetera, and if you paid attention, like most people did, and I'm sure you did as well.
Yes.
You saw what the results of that were.
That's because we cowered down, and we didn't know better.
No, that's because the businesses, no, the businesses chose not to stay open in lieu of losing their license.
And then that, that's because we didn't know. Now we know our rights, and we know what to fight for.
That's those were.
We were scared, and we cowered down, but now we're standing up, and we're standing up for our rights. So we want you guys just to stand up for our rights. That's what we're asking you to do.
I hear you.
Thank you. And have Dr. Lou, there's, you guys are on Zoom. She should be here answering our questions.
We can ask her to come again.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else like, oh, yep, sorry, geez, how could I forget you?
How could you forget me? So I wanna say this, that the Bill of Rights trumps all of that, okay? All those agencies and all the pretended law. So we have a Bill of Rights, and I wanted to talk about that whatever the state or the feds or the media put out, we don't have to take it as gospel, okay? There are many, many, many people around the world that are disputing this freak show that's going on. So there's a Dr. Bosch from Belgium who just put out a big commentary on it, and how he believes that there's gonna be a huge fallout from this vaccine. So, you know, I think it's good to go on record, even if it's in just the little city council chambers in Yuba City, that there is a definite difference of opinion from a lot of people on the COVID program. So that's basically it, and we don't have to ask permission to live free. The businesses that shut down, they should have stood up. It was their choice. So that's what I gotta say.
I will acknowledge the fact that the Bill of Rights and the Constitution do supersede, okay? As far as the city's posture when it's come to enforcement during this whole issue, which is now over a year old, we have consistently adopted an educational platform, not an enforcement. To my knowledge, this city has never, to date, written any citations, told anybody to close. We've left that up to the individual businesses, and I just believe that that needs to be stated at this particular point in time. I appreciate that. If you can.
I'm a disabled combat veteran. I'm not really good in this stuff, but one of the things that we did most to be effective in a lot of our campaigns was PR, public relations. I hear a lot of people in here speaking about the Bill of Rights, speaking about our rights, you know, the businesses' rights, private businesses to run their businesses the way they want, how the Bill of Rights and the Constitution supersede and trump everything, everything, including a law, the laws we have on the books right now, including labeling people felons and taking away their rights for fishing without a license, okay? I mean, so that's just one thing. But the big PR that needs to happen from the people we elected, and I'm gonna point a finger at you, Wade, because I especially elected you on what you campaigned for. I'm new here, been here three years. You campaigned on, you wanted to get away from the bureaucrats at the Capitol and be able to run the city in the way that we should be able to run our city. It ain't happening, guys. Ain't nobody telling the businesses that are allowed to run their businesses the way they want to run their businesses. They're being told comply, comply with CDC, listen to these numbers, be afraid. It's all psy-ops, psy-ops. My neighbors, fantastic people, I love my whole community. You know, I moved here from the city and traveled the world. I came back to California because I love California. My neighbors, both of them got COVID, both have underlying, you know, conditions, recovered fine. People recover. What happened to the flu? What happened to heart disease? What happened to people dying of old age? It's a psy-ops, all right? And the sooner that our elected officials get up and start campaigning, you know, PR, hey, businesses, check me out, I got your back, you know? Run your business how you want to run it. I get kicked out of FIES because I don't wear a mask. I have a medical condition. Law enforcement says, okay, well, file a civil lawsuit. If I was gay and they kicked me out, file a civil lawsuit. If I was black and they kicked me out, file a civil lawsuit. Okay, private businesses can operate the way they want to operate, and they could suffer judicial, legis, you know, whatever, you know? We got our three branches. But we need you guys to really tell the people, you have rights. You have rights. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Any comments from the council? Continue, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As part of a request, as everyone knows or has been watching the news, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, HR 1319, was signed into law by the president on Friday. I'm gonna give, to the best of my ability, all the information that I know as of today. We're gathering more information on the rules and things around it. So this is really a high-level overview, but this bill provides additional relief to address the continued impact of COVID-19 of the economy, public, state, and local governments, individuals, and businesses. The city of Yuba City has been allocated $16.6 million of local relief funding. They're gonna come in two allotments. The first allotment will be arriving in May of 2021, and the second allotment will arrive approximately 14 months later. Eligible uses include revenue replacement, premium pay for essential workers, assistance to small businesses and households, hard-hit industries, economic recovery. Potential infrastructure investments include water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. I think it's important to note, funds cannot be deposited into pension funds. Other funding that make it to the city of Yuba City through the state will be water delinquency assistance to income-qualified households, assistance to the fighter and fight firefighter and safer grants, potential Clean Air and Drinking Water Act grants as well. We need more insight into the restrictions on the eligible use. We've been spending a lot of time over the last couple days trying to understand how we access the money, what are the rules behind asking for it, how we get funded, how do we record it, how do we keep track of it? Some confusing references to prohibited use as it relates to taxes, and the extended use must be tied to the impacts of the pandemic. We are listening to the guidelines for the eligible uses now, and we should have updates in the coming meetings.
All right. Saw a hand go up. Nope, we'll let you.
I know this is another, again, I'm Courtney, this is another hypothetical question, but if there is, let's say, rules to access this funding, let's say, oh, you have to enforce X, Y, and Z in your community, are you guys willing to not take funding if it means a worse situation for your community?
I would just want to go on record, this is not an enforcement situation. This is for the potential uses that we outlined, so it'll be things to help improve the recovery for, at least as we understand it, for the improvement of recovery from COVID. So I guess as we bring those items forward, it would be at the council's consideration whether or not they wanted to, if it was actually using enforcement, but that's not how we are reading the law at this, or the fund or act at this time.
Right.
I would, hold on for a second. I would add that if anything that looks like it has funding that comes to us that has strings, we evaluate.
Yep.
Okay?
Okay.
I mean, that's the bottom line.
Every time.
If it has, if it has some condition with it, we not, we don't have to take this money.
Right, right, and I appreciate that. New York just issued an Excelsior pass, which is a vaccine pass that will limit people from accessing certain parts of the city unless they're fully up to date on vaccines, and I would hate to see something like that trickle down from Sacramento into our community. That's where, I mean, I would hope we would draw the line at mass way before something like that would ever access. And so I know funding is, you know, it's lucrative, it's tempting, but I really appreciate that, Mayor Boomgarden, so, ah, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Burns?
Well, I know that the city is never gonna reject any money. That's, I mean, we know that. But I want to say, I just want to point it out that this is not the American way, okay? The things that we're living under here today. The funding, the giveaway program, okay? I know many, many businesses got PPP packages or whatever they call them, okay? Huge amounts of money dumped into private enterprise from the government, okay? So, I mean, civics, back in my day, we had a little clearer understanding, you know, of the American way. The American way is not what can I get? The American way is how can I produce and how can I become successful without handouts? I mean, the handout program is over the top. To me, it's buying your compliance, basically. I listened to a speech, the best speech I ever listened to in my life was by a young man from Fairbanks, Alaska, who they put in prison, okay, in a special prison in the United States for people that are gifted with the gift of speaking. Now, you probably didn't even know about a prison like that, but they're there, and I can tell you about it. But he said this in his speech. The federal government basically pays the state to do their dirty work, and then it rolls downhill. And I don't believe there was truer words ever spoken. So we need to get back to personal liberty, personal liberty, and personal responsibility. That's it.
Thank you.
I'm Nita Elfick, and I'm gonna say I agree with Courtney and Mr. Burns in some respects, and quite a few of them, but I do have a just reality check question. Do you have a listing of your priorities, of things that need to be done?
City goals and priorities?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
And is it involve infrastructure and water, sewer, that type of thing? Have you got priorities?
Yes, in fact, we're getting ready to revisit those.
And so they will be brought to the council?
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Actually, we will be having a public workshop, and I hope you will attend.
Yeah, that's 16.6 million. That's a lot of money.
Well, if you're talking about how we're gonna spend the 16.6 million, I will clarify this and say this again. Once we have the guidelines and we understand what the criteria is, not only to receive the funds, but to spend them, I guarantee you that that will be discussed in an open session.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm Gary Maines, and my question, sir, the money, the funds that will come from the feds?
Yes.
Will they filter through the state and then to the county, and then to us? Is that how that will work?
It's our understanding, different than the CARES Act, this funding will come directly to the city.
Directly to the city? Oh, that's good.
Versus the CARES Act that funded itself through the state and then to the city. So that's our understanding right now.
Well, the reason I ask that question is because I've had conversations with supervisors who alluded to the idea that if we don't do what the governor says, he's gonna blackmail, hold the money. So that's why I'm wondering if we were gonna be in that same position, not a good position.
Yeah, this funding is not similar to maybe some of the other funding that you're talking about. This is, 1319 will come directly to the city from the feds.
Thank you, sir.
Thought you had your hand up again. No? Okay. Anybody else? All right, back to the council. Any questions for the city manager?
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I participated in the Legis Cities webinar. Were you on that same?
Spencer was.
Spencer was? Okay, Spencer might be virtual in somewhere. From my understanding, the money comes directly from the treasures to us directly, which is very different than the CARES Act.
That's correct.
And in one area that sounds like, I mean, our council has been very, very open, in my opinion, with input from the community when we've looked at priorities, and this particular money, it also, there was a high emphasis on community input, on the discussions of how those funds could be expended, but there's also some unknowns that are not clear yet, as you pointed out, with those particular guidelines. And as a council, even an open session or closed session, I have, and I've heard my colleagues ask the questions, what are the requirements behind the money? How do we have to spend this, or what are the expectations? And so I think that we've done, we've been very open to that, and we've been clear with those discussions, and to move forward with this particular money, and there's additional options, I believe, for state funding that may be available, but that would be requested by us as a city if we want some of this additional money. A lot of it does have to tie in with our water and wastewater and infrastructure, that it is antiquated in certain parts, and we desperately, I would say, need some major uplift and, you know, upkeeping on that. So I'm encouraged by this. I'm encouraged that there's multiple, multiple, multiple streams of money that is not necessarily coming to the state, that is going to various other entities. So there's a lot, a lot of resources for different needs, but there's also a great opportunity for us to be very creative in finding some of those solutions in this community within the funds that. within the funds that, of the 16 million or 16.6 million that we have been allocated, but that doesn't mean that we have all the money in the bank yet. So thank you, Mr. City Manager. I appreciate your thoroughness in keeping up onto this.
You're welcome. One other item, these are one-time monies, so when people talk about getting funding, these are gonna happen one time. So folks talk about reoccurring monies and those type of things. This is a one-time set of monies that we would be looking at and bringing forward for review and consideration with both council and public input. Nobody else? Nobody else? Okay, thank you. Last chance for public opinion? All right. Not yet. That's next.